Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do have a lot of people in here tonight. I believe that most of you in the audience, with the exception of the people that are on the agenda, are here to talk about bests. So we've moved that down to the end of our agenda when we will be talking about the best items in order that we can get through our regular business. First thing I'm going to ask for is are there any agenda changes, Ethan?
Nothing to present from staff.
Okay, council, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted, I make a motion to approve it.
Second, have a motion and a couple of seconds to pass the consent agenda on favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda stands as approved. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move right on to new business. And the first item is we have a presentation or some information may be coming from our Evergy representatives. You guys can find your way up to the podium and give us your name and let us know why you come to address the City of Halsted tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Travis. So start off, my name is Doug Maracle. I'm the Senior Director of Evergy's.
Could you guys please hold it down on the crowd? If you need to talk to your neighbor, go outside.
We're, I'm the Senior Director of Evergy's Combustion Turbines and Renewables. However, I've had positions in the past for about the past 25 years. I've been the plant manager of the gas-fired plants down in Colwich, Wichita area. Then the plant manager of Jeffrey Energy Center, Evergy's biggest coal plant up north to St. Mary's. And then recently, last three years, I've been working in the renewables and combustion turbine space. About 2017, my associate here, Brandon Sack, who I'll introduce more thoroughly here shortly. We started a pilot project down in Sedgwick County, one megawatt battery that was capable of producing for five hours. And the technology that we use there is similar to technology what's being discussed for being built here. So we did that on a one-megawatt pilot basis just because we really didn't know what we were going to get into. There was a little bit newer technology at the time, certainly was new to Evergy, so we wanted to start small. We partnered with Sedgwick County and we put that installation at the Sedgwick County Zoo, right next to the park and right next to the housing that's just north of the zoo there. So over the last, you know, five, six years, the project went live, went fairly well. I mean, there was a lot of hiccups just from the technology or from the OEM, the equipment manufacturer that we chose. But we didn't have any real concerns. There was no concerns with the environment. So the reason we're here today, I'm going to ask Brendan to come up now. So Brandon Sack, he's in our development group. He was one of the ones that was in charge of that development project and he oversees and comes to meetings like this all over the state of Kansas, talking about what we're doing. He's going to talk a little bit about the all-source RFP that we have that's out there. We're just looking for, to partner with communities where we can help with development and hopefully oversee future ownership of sites once they're developed. So we'll talk about some of that. So Brandon?
Thank you, Doug. Thanks, Doug. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. It's good to be here and talk a little bit about Evergy. So I am the Director of Energy Development. So where he runs power plants, I work in the early stage and I do exactly this. I come out and try to talk about some things that Evergy's doing, some things that we see out in the communities, and really just try to educate more about all that we have coming up over the next 10 to 20 years with everybody that's trying to move to our territory. And really, economic development's probably the biggest thing that we're working on right now at Evergy, how to stay in front of it and how to make sure we attract the right people to Kansas and Missouri both, so we can keep our houses, keep our jobs, keep our communities full. That's really what we're working on. So we've got three tenants at Evergy: affordability, reliability, and sustainability. So every single project that we look at, whether it's transmission, whether it's distribution, whether it's generation, all of that, we always look at that. Affordability, we have many people overseeing everything we do is affordable. We can't do anything new. We can't add anything to base rates unless we go talk to the commission, right? So we're always held in check when it comes to affordability. Reliability, same thing. If we go to those commissioners and we say, hey, guys, we spent all this money and by the way, it doesn't run, you know, and we can't keep the lights on, they're going to say, why not? And we're going to get in trouble. And then sustainability, a lot of our new customers, our new clients, and a lot of our old customers and old clients, sustainability is a big deal. Some people think, well, that means we need green energy or we need clean energy. No, it means sustainable energy. What's going to get us through the next 10 years? What's going to get us through the next 20 years? What's going to get my kids' kids through their life? That's what we're looking for when we say sustainable. So when we talk about Evergy, we're talking about a company that's 125 years old. We're talking about a company that's done this for a very long time and we've been learning the entire time. So we really try to take all the things we learn and we try to come up with really good plans, not just internally, but with our communities. So opportunities like this for us to get out and educate, talk about it, talk about the things we're doing, but we also hear feedback. Hey, had you think about this? Hey, did you think about that? Hey, did you think about this? Sometimes we have and sometimes we haven't. So all of this input's extremely important to us as we go, as we move forward. So Evergy does a thing now called an Integrated Resource Plan, and we have to submit that every three years officially to the commissioners. And every year we update it because every five minutes, something's changing in Washington DC and we have to stay in front of that. So currently, our plan talks about what we're going to do the next 10 years to not only work through the new customers coming, but also to make the things that we have now more reliable. Our coal fleet, for example, he talked about Jeffrey Energy Center. That was built in 1980. It's getting to be an old plant. It's an old power plant and it's one of our newer power plants. So when we talk about some of the power plants that we're trying to manage right now, we've got to look at what are we going to replace those with? Because we have fixed those and fixed those and fixed those. And right now, they're running well. But in 20 years, I'm not sure how much we can still fix it. There's just going to be a time when it's like it's cheaper to build a new one. So you've seen a couple of gas plants announced in the region. Hopefully, you've heard about the one in Hutchinson and the one down by Viola. Those two will be coming soon. And you've probably heard about three solar facilities. One by Altoona, Kansas, if you know where that is, by Fredonia, one up in Lawrence, Kansas, and then another one in, it'd be southwest Missouri. Those are on the early stages. Those are in front of the commissioners right now, getting approved. And then we've also got a simple-cycle turbine going in northwest Missouri, all going for approval right now. That just gets us to where we need to be in the next four years. We have a lot more to do to keep the lights on around here when it comes to generation. So the next 10 years, we're looking at over 2,000 megawatts of solar in our plan, another 1,500 megawatts of wind. And then I'm looking here and I see over 5,000 more megawatts of dispatchable generation. Right now, that's natural gas combined cycles and simple cycle. But let's say nuclear technology develops, could be a nuclear plant. Let's say hydrogen develops. It could be a hydrogen plant. The point being there that it's going to be some type of baseload technology. So one of the things we're really trying to do when we do these is think about how do we keep the lights on all the time? So it can't be 100% wind, can't be 100% solar. We don't want it to be 100% coal or 100% gas because when you rely too much on one fuel source or one technology, you start to get into trouble. 20 years ago, we relied so heavily on coal. And then what happened? We got floods. And then suddenly, the trains couldn't deliver our coal to our power plants. And we had some hiccups there and we had coal conservation efforts, right? And it was very public. Luckily, we had guests that we could fall back on. But now we're even trying to diversify even more. So affordability, sustainability, what was the last one? Reliability, thank you. That's very important. I want my lights to stay on. I want my AC to stay on, especially a week like this. So I talked about the new power plants coming. And I talked about the IRP. So now the IRP is in front of the commissioners and we've talked through those things. Now we go out for what's called an RFP, which is a request for proposal so we can build the new power plants. Not the six that we talked about, but over the next five years, who's got things and opportunities for us? The one thing I left off of that forward-looking resource plan was there is a battery that made it into the plan. And it was 150-megawatt battery. So we've looked at the tech, we built our one-megawatt plant, and we actually had some issues there. But what we've learned going through those issues is that we can handle it and we're starting to understand the risks. We've also worked with a few locals that have put some batteries in as well. So we kind of have a few people in the area that have worked through this tech a little bit, so we can try to understand it better ourselves. So the RFP is asking for batteries, it's asking for solar, it's asking for wind, it's asking for natural gas. It's actually an all-source RFP. So if someone offers nuclear, we'll look at the nuclear option too. So anything that someone can offer us to help fulfill this plan, we'll look at and we will evaluate. And then we go through a process with consultants and with our internal teams, what makes the most sense, what fills this plan. So most people in this room have seen wind. Wind's been in this area forever. Most people have seen natural gas power plants. They've been in this area forever. What people have not seen much of in any of our territories are solar and battery. And it's new and it's scary and it's different. So Doug talked about starting small. We started small with solar and battery. So battery, we started small with the small batteries. Solar, we did the same thing. We built some two-megawatt power plants for some municipalities. We built a 20-megawatt power plant for a customer, all using different types of technologies, using different trackers, using different solar panels, using different inverters. All of these for us to help understand how to build them, how to own them, and how to maintain them. So that's really what we've tried to do, is start small and work our way into it. We didn't want to start super big. And it's really worked really well for us to learn a lot. We've learned a lot. So let's talk about a few things we learned. I'm going to start with solar. Everything you hear, the same things we hear. You know, what about the inverters? What about, well, they don't work when the clouds are, you know, they don't work at night. That's absolutely true. And there is a little bit of solar when the clouds are gone, but not a lot of solar when the clouds are gone. But when we look at solar, I look at it as like it's a power plant. First and foremost, it is a power plant. But when it's 105 degrees out, that solar is right there and it's producing. And it's producing at its peak to provide power when it's most important to me at my house and my family at my house and maybe even you at your house. Because it's 105 degrees, I want something that's going to be producing. That is a good one. And it's a peaking plant. So when it's negative 20 at 6:00 AM in December, we're not relying on solar because it's not going to be producing at that time. So we have wind farms, we have coal, we have natural gas, all these other things to back it up. Holistically, it's a cheaper, more affordable plan for all of our customers. Battery, battery is an interesting technology. I see battery up here a few times. Battery today is not the battery it was five years ago. It's not the battery it was two years ago. It's not the battery it was when we put it in. It's not the battery it was yesterday. They have had a lot of work moving through battery technology. What I'll say when we come to city councils, county commission meetings, municipality board meetings, is there is a process in place to work through this, to make projects the way you want them. And if the projects don't end up the way you want them, your process is to shut it down. So people ask for things. People say, make this as safe as possible. Make this where this doesn't happen. Or if this happens, what's the mitigation plan? Or there really aren't any benefits here. What are really our benefits? The process takes care of that. And what I try to talk about is let the process do its job. So a lot of people like to shut it down at the very beginning. Like, let's not even have a conversation about it. Let's just shut it down. And I think what I'd like to be and in the community I live in, what I try to preach is, let's hear it. Let's see what they have. Let's see what we can come up with. Because what we're finding a lot is that the benefits that come to the local community are just outrageous. And they are good. And there's something that you didn't really think about, how much it really impacts the things that you do. For example, whenever you build these new power plants, the local school districts are going to get a huge influx of dollars from the property taxes while they're exempt for the first 10 years. They are exempt for the first 10 years when you talk about solar and wind, right? And even natural gas is exempt for the first 10 years. So we put community benefits in plans in place. So for the first 10 years, guess what? They get money. Because we know that that's there. So we put it in our plans when we go to the commission to say, we're also going to give back to the community for that first 10 years. So we make sure that stuff there. But if there's not a CUP process in place or an SUP process in place or a process in place, you never get there and you never get your money. So hear them out and talk with them about, you know, what are the things that we can accomplish together? I like our library. Our library needs some more money. Our fire station needs a new fire truck. All of these things are things you can ask for, but you can't do it without the process. The process is so important. How do we protect our community members? We do it through the process. The process, I can't explain enough, is important and is frustrating for everybody because everybody has a thought and everybody has an opinion and everyone, everyone, and there's so much stuff out there on the internet. Go the next step. Look for things that may counter an argument, you know? I'm so pro this. Maybe look for the, maybe listen, right? Maybe listen to the counterargument and say, oh, you're right, that does do that. So how do we mitigate that? Or even on the other side, oh, it does do this. How do we mitigate that? And if we put these in place? Those are the things we can accomplish as a community. And as a community, we're all neighbors, we're all friends, we're all colleagues. That's really what we're trying to do is make it a better place for me, for my kids. And my kids are going to have kids. And I want it to be better for all of them. And there are opportunities. And there's opportunities you're going to turn down too. It's really going to happen that way. So for us, battery technology, we don't take it lightly when we put it in our plans at Evergy because we know these things exist in all the communities. So when we go to a community, when we pick our battery project, it's going to be in an area that's accepting of batteries. They have a process in place where everybody's protected. So those are all the things we're going to look at when we go through our RFP. Community choice. And then other things that we look at is how does it fit into the southwest power pool? How does it fit with customers coming to our area? The southwest power pool is who controls the big lines and the power flow on those big lines. If we put all the batteries in the exact same spot, that power pool is going to say, you can't do that. You need to spread it out across your system. All of these things are things that we look at when we go through the RFP. And affordability is a big thing too. So if you've got a good connection spot, you've got a willing community, a good partner in a community, and just a reliable area to build, those are all things we'll look at in the RFP when we do choose projects to submit to it. I don't know if you have any questions or any comments or anything for me while I'm standing here, councilor, mayor, but I think.
Counsel, you have any? We won't be taking comment from the crowd or questions from the crowd direct to Evergy. Because that's not why they're here. Brandon, if you're comfortable, you can go ahead. If you want to take.
I will take it from the council, the mayor, but you can look on the website. You do have my email addresses.
I do work for Evergy.
Yeah, good. Thank you, man.
And what you have put out there is not accurate statements.
I'm going to, I'm going to call order and ask you to sit down, sir.
But council and mayor, if you do have a couple of questions about our processes and the things we look for, you know, when we're picking projects, you can, you can ask. And then the public has our information. They can, they can contact us anytime and we respond.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
I just want to thank you for coming and providing the information and giving us your, what you can and what you, you know, are currently doing. I think that it's like, I mean, what you said about being, I mean, being open to at least you have to know what, what options are out there, how things are changing, and at least be educated on all of the sides of the situation. So I appreciate you giving us that information and taking time out of your day to do that. So that's all.
Anybody else?
How many RFPs for battery plants do you have currently?
So it's one RFP and it's an all-source. So it's for everything that's on the list. So you could submit battery, you could submit solar, you could submit wind.
And then Evergy gives the communities to do this, correct?
No, so Evergy will look at this list and then we'll look at projects that are on that list. And then what we do is, all of those things are part of the evaluation. Where is it situated? What communities are they in? You know, how is the community, you know, are they accepting or not?
So where's the RFPs coming from?
So the, who answers them?
Now, where are they, where are the requests? Where's the RFP requests coming from?
So the RFP was driven by this IRP, this Integrated Resource Plan, which went to, I know it's a lot of acronyms. You ought to sit in one of our meetings. It's exciting. So from then, we submit that to the, to the, to the market. So the entire world can see that RFP. Anyone in the public can go out and read that RFP.
Okay, okay.
Anything else, council?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in, Brandon. Doug, thank you for being here. I'll let you guys go ahead and take off if you'd like to.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks again for being here. All right, council, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. And that would be a presentation donation request from the Halsted Community Foundation.
Good evening. I'm Macy Mueller and I'm the Associate Director of the Halsted Community Foundation. And I'm here this evening on a couple of matters of business. But I first wanted to start off by some, talking about some recent successes that the Halsted Community Foundation has experienced. Just in 2025, we recently awarded $20,000 to, in scholarships, to our Halsted High School seniors and also allocated nearly $18,500 for grants to local nonprofits and community projects and initiatives going on. So we're really excited about being able to give money back to our community and back to our residents here in Halsted. The council is probably very familiar with the Patterson Family Foundation and the really great opportunity they've given the foundation the last couple of years. We've had a matching opportunity in the past two years for up to $70,000. And they recently announced that they would extend that opportunity again, except this time it's up to $100,000. And so that means in a month's time, we will have an opportunity to raise up to $200,000 for our community foundation, which eventually trickles back down into the local nonprofits and projects that we help support. We, our Halsted Community Foundation Board has dedicated July 11th to August 11th as our match month, which is coming up quickly. And hopefully, you've started to see some news generated about our 12 Days of Christmas in July. And that's kind of our kickoff event to this match month. We have 12 days, starting on July 11th, of free community events and also some fundraising efforts in there just to build some excitement around this opportunity and to just also build some visibility for the community foundation. And so I'm here for, like I said, a couple of reasons. The first one is centered around that 12 Days of Christmas in July. We are hoping to host a 5K run on Saturday, July 12th. And I have submitted a special events permit for your approval just to, there will be no street closures. And we are using a route very common to the old settlers, 5K. So, but I did want to submit that permit to you guys for your approval. I also wanted to come to the council and talk to you a little bit about the matching opportunity. So 50% of any donation made will be matched to that fund that is made, whether it's to our operating account, to our impact fund, to our community improvement fund, or to a dedicated fund for many organizations, whether it's the Historical Society or the Learning Center, whatever that might be. The other 50% will be, and this is from the Patterson Family Foundation, they want us to invest that into our impact fund, which is what we use to make grants to the community and also to our operating endowment so that we can ensure that we can continue to serve our community for generations to come. So I would like to ask the council to consider making your annual donation during our match month so that it does get matched up to, or gets matched, it becomes part of the $100,000 match. And if you have specific questions about where that, where you want to invest that money, whether it's the impact fund or the operations fund, I'm happy to answer any questions about that. The last thing I wanted to talk about tonight, Ethan kind of just said you can just say everything right in one, one fell swoop, so here I go. The other, the other thing I wanted to talk to you guys about tonight is an idea that the Community Foundation Board has been working on since the last time I actually was here to visit with you, which was last December, to talk about the Christmas jingle that we co-hosted with the Chamber of Commerce. And since that event, we've been really talking about how we can invest in our community, how we can grow that event and make it a very special time for our community. And so the board would like to proceed with developing a Christmas light display in Riverside Park. And this would be a multi-year approach to raising funds and purchasing displays to put out in the park during the Christmas season. We've already allocated funds to purchase lights to wrap around the trees for this year. And we'll do some major fundraising during our match period and with hopes of purchasing those displays at the beginning of 2026 and getting them set up, you know, in December of '26. And then again, just building upon that in the years to come. And we really feel like this is a great opportunity, not only to build community, something that the community can be proud of, but also to attract outside visitors during the holiday season. It's an opportunity for businesses, families, organizations, all to donate and be recognized. You know, maybe they sponsor a specific display or, you know, pull their, pull their funds to purchase a display. But we just feel like it would be really fun. We have a great facility in Riverside Park. We've had some great conversations with the city already, Ethan and Grant and Pat, and talking about kind of the infrastructure that's already in Riverside Park as far as electricity and everything. And so we feel like it's a very feasible idea. But we just wanted to come, I just wanted to come before the council today to kind of talk about that idea and see if you guys had any concerns before we continue to move forward with the purchasing of that first installment of, of Christmas lights to wrap the trees this year. So lots of things to talk about, but I will, of course, answer any questions about any of these different initiatives that I've mentioned.
Well, I'd probably make sure you stay with LED over there. I don't know how much power we have available in that part, Pat, do you?
And we did talk a lot about LED. I have talked a lot to other communities in Kansas who have set up different displays like this and talking about what's worked and what hasn't. And some of them have been around for generator, for decades. And they are starting to make the switch to LED because, you know, in the beginning, that, that wasn't available. And so that's something, something we were certainly going to invest in from the beginning.
Well, I like the idea, council.
Yeah. Well, I love anything that's holiday themed. So I think that's a great, like, community offering that you're, that you're doing. And I appreciate all that hard work that you're putting into it. I love that everything goes back into our community. And it's just another thing that people. And it's just another thing that people can look forward to, traditions and things like that, when you're talking about a culture of your community. So I love that and I appreciate all that hard work because I know that's, a ton of work goes into all of that. I did have a question about the two funds. Do you go over that one more? I know you talked about it briefly, but just, you said there was an operation, operating fund, I think, and then the impact fund?
Yes. So we, at, at the foundation, we have about 30 funds that we help service. And again, those are very, can be very specific to the Halsted Cemetery Association and the Learning Center. And then we have the more broad funds that are like our impact fund. And that's what we use to make our competitive grants from each year. So we just finished up that, that cycle and awarded dollars to like our 4H Club to do the planters on Main Street. And we help with the blessing box at the Methodist Church. We help them put in non, or excuse me, perishable food vouchers that, that folks can take up to the market and, and spend. And so just different projects like that are what the impact fund is used for. The operations endowment is, just what it sounds like, is, is a fund that helps sustain the community foundation as a whole and, and what we're able to do in the community. And again, that 50% that gets put into both of those funds, that is, this year, that is required by the Patterson Family Foundation. In years past, we've got, our board has got to decide kind of what we did with that matching money. But this year, they really want us to invest back into our foundation as well.
Thank you.
Yes, you bet.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more questions or discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the annual budget allocation and donation of $15,000 to the Halsted Community Foundation to be given during their matching campaign window.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to do our annual contribution to the Halsted Community Foundation during this period of time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign that carries. Thank you, Macy.
I appreciate your time this evening. I hope to be back in the fall with an update on the results from our match and also with the, the Christmas light display. Should be a really fun time for our community.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, everybody's favorite subject. Let's move on to the 2025 fireworks discharge and sale dates. We got a resolution before us. Do you want to give us any detail, Ethan, or?
Yeah, the Lions Club, as our only permitted stand, asked if the city would be open to allowing sale and discharge on July 5th this year, as it's on a Saturday with the 4th being on a Friday. So the resolution included in your packet would observe our normal dates of the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, and then also add July 5th.
From a fireman's point of view, one of my most miserable days of, of the year is July 4th and the days according to that.
Ethan noted that there are cities that have, are expanding those dates. There are some that are contracting those dates. North Newton in particular is one that I'm aware of, and it's the 4th of July only.
And I'm just speaking for me and my, it's by far, and we have another firefighter in here, he can probably sum this up too, in the crowd, I would, I think three days is enough in my book. But that's my opinion, because if you said in, three days of listening to it and running calls and all that stuff, I, you're not going to get this guy to vote for it.
I visited with citizens and they're recommending, because they saw this on the agenda, they went on, online and saw our agenda, and they're suggesting possibly 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
Yeah.
Now, I could go for that. That would be fine to get in the Saturday if they want, that's fine. But I would be a little bit more lenient.
My original request to Ethan was 3rd, 4th, and 5th. We would be more than happy for that. And he told me you may want to do the 2nd through the 5th.
Is, uh?
We would definitely like to sell on the 5th because we know everyone else is going to.
I know you're, I'm good with that.
Okay, but yeah, the 3rd, 4th, and 5th would be fantastic.
Okay.
The reason we left the 2nd is because that's the date set by ordinance. You can update it with resolution and we can do that. It's just that historically has been what the community has been used to.
I'm just one vote, so.
And just for a public refresher, what are the hours on that, Ethan?
Uh, we allow 8:00 AM to midnight every day.
Glad my house is insulated well.
Is it midnight or 11:59 PM?
Well, I say technically 11:59.
Ethan, it sounds like the consensus is to go 3rd, 4th, and 5th. Do we just want to note the dates and refer to it as the same resolution you have here?
Yeah, just refer to the resolution and with those dates.
Put it in your motion.
We'll get it updated.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-03, a resolution setting the dates for the sale and discharge of fireworks in the city of Halsted for 2025. Two dates of 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-03 as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign that carries.
Sorry, kids, on the extra day. Just can't do it.
And Burton Street's for a whole week, so just look to the west of you.
All right, let's keep moving on our agenda here. The next item is the signs grant update, and I hope Ethan's got good news for us on that.
I do. They have not made official announcements yet, but we did receive some funding. It's slightly less. It's been a very popular program from All Intents with lots of applications. We had seven signs that put in to collaborate on this project. And with us getting less fund, grant funds than we anticipated, we kind of went back through the overall budget. And if the city would be willing to put the remaining $30,000 that had been allocated for dragon grants that haven't been spent this year towards that, we can fund all those sign projects and not have to tell any of those business owners that their project can't go forward.
Remind me when our dragon grant, is that January to January?
Yeah, it's, it's a full fiscal year and we essentially take dragon grants at any time during the year. If the funds are expended, then we hold those to the next budget year, assuming the council continues to put that program in the budget. And then the first meeting in March is always when you guys get to review anything that's been submitted up to that point. And after that, it just goes on a first come, first served basis if you approve the project.
Have we had many inquiries lately regarding dragon grants?
No, we only had two and you guys actually approved waiving the time period because we had not had much interest. And these sign improvements do fit with the general purpose of the dragon grant program as far as facade and downtown improvement.
Sure. So it would be continuing to basically use these funds in the manner we kind of established for them, counsel.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion, a motion to approve the city of Halsted matching contributions, not to exceed $30,000 for the signs grant through the Kansas Department of Commerce for approved project locations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve up to 30K for this signs grant match. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign that motion carries. Next up is zoning amendment recommendation on the best regulations. You want to pre tense this, Ethan?
The Planning Commission made a motion to forward the regulations that were included in your packet to you all for consideration. And you all this evening have the option to accept that recommendation, to take no action and further study the matter yourself. You may refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for additional study and statements specific as to what you would like them to do, or you can take no action.
Well, do we have any discussion amongst the council?
None that we haven't talked about.
Well, this motion would be merely to receive and study the Planning Commission's recommendations. That's all it's going to be to, is to receive them and study them. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to receive the Planning Commission's recommendations and record regarding the proposed draft zoning regulations 4-109-C6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and study the zoning amendment recommendation that was brought forward by P and Z. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
So that will be in council review now. Now we'll move on to public comment regarding BES. Hopefully you can go in an orderly fashion. You got a list, Julie?
All right. These are all the people that have signed up for public forum. There were some that expressed potential, but didn't want to sign up because they weren't sure. Just if you want to track the time, let me know.
Yeah, we have a lot of people on here, so I'm going to limit you to three minutes tonight. If it goes pretty smooth, we could extend it and you could possibly come up for a second time. Hopefully everybody's okay with that. So we'll start out first with Catherine Groves, or Graves. Well, we can come back to her.
Here she comes.
Okay, I'm going to try to do this with my baby. Hi, y'all. My name is Catherine Graves. I was asked to read this letter of the future of Halsted. This is from a 13-year-old wonderful little woman here. She was supposed to read this at the P and Z, but there was no comments during P and Z. So I am going to be representing her in this letter? Also the future of Halsted, right there. And there's another one outside also. So she is saying, "Good afternoon, Mayor Dennis Travis, members of the city council and members of the planning and zoning committee. My name is Haley Green. I am 13 years old and I live at 515 Walnut Street here in Halsted. I'm here today to express my concerns and to urge you to reconsider placing the battery energy storage system in our town. I understand, excuse me, that this, the decision may already be moving forward, but I hope you'll still listen to me and the voices of the concerned citizens of this town whose lives will be directly impacted. You may have heard about some of the benefits of a BES, such as reducing power outages, lowering electricity costs, and strengthening the local economy. But it's crucial to also consider the serious downsides, such as a limited capacity, lifespan, safety concerns, and environmental impacts." She also says, "I have also recently been informed that the Tallgrass Prairie Energy Storage Project doesn't directly reduce energy bills. It also will not be supplying any long-term jobs locally. While minimizing power outages and boosting our local economy sounds appealing, I am deeply concerned about the risks a BES poses to our community. Did you know that even under ideal conditions, these batteries only last between five to 10 years? What will happen to those batteries when those batteries reach the end of their lifespan and become hazardous waste that cannot be easily recycled?" I looked up to what would cost to decommission a 140, was it megawatt, LFP battery storage system? And the answer was, "Total estimate 2.25 to 6.8 million dollars. Will the city be responsible for that cost? More importantly, let's talk about safety. If there is a malfunction or a fire at our BES facility, it could lead to a catastrophic disaster. These fires are notoriously difficult to put out. During this process, it releases toxic chemicals into the air that would settle in, on our ground soil and could possibly contaminate our groundwater, also known as a Ogallala Wal, Ogala, I'm nervous, hey y'all, aquifer. Depending on the severity of the damage, could last months to years. For example, a fire at a BES site can create a thermal runway where one battery ignites and sets off neighboring batteries. These can spread rapidly and due to the chemical makeup of the batteries, they are extremely hard for special-trained firefighters to contain." How many firefighters are going to be responsible for this? If such an incident were to occur, here it would endanger a radius that extends beyond Halsted's, our Halsted borders. It is, is that the legacy we want for our future generations? Are a few economic potentials worth putting our community, community, safety, health, and environment at such a big risk? I ask you to consider the long-term impacts on our community, such as our homes, our health, and our environment, before moving forward to the next step. I'm asking that some may make a motion to ban commercial BES from within our city limit, please. Let's work together and find solutions that can truly benefit our town without jeopardizing our lives." This is from the 13-year-old Haley Green, who obviously wrote a beautiful, well-researched letter. So I don't know if y'all know Haley, but I don't know this girl, but I'm going to give her props because I don't know how much time I have left. She has made some very serious points. Our aquifer is already in danger. It's already fragile. That water goes not between Halsted to here, it goes counties. How far is that going to go?
Catherine, thank you for coming in. Your time's up.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Ronald Dick to come up, please.
Ronald Dick, 420 Santa Fe Street. I've been a resident of Halsted for 20 years. Never have I ever seen the commitment from the community and the backing of, I don't know, opposition to anything in this community in my life in this town. I'd like you to look at all of these people and ask them, why are you so interested in this project? Or why are you so opposed to it? You'll find more opposition. I think Councilman Jim put together a good vote of over 90% of his respondents were a no to this in the community. And if you ask any of the yes, they can't give you anything other than money. Money is not everything to these people, and you will see that. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Carolyn Armaderas? There's Carolyn.
Yeah, my name is Carolyn Armaderas and I live on West Street here in Halsted, which is not far from the proposed site for BES. I'm here to urge you to recommend, to reconsider this project due to its serious risks to our equus bed aquifer, our safety, and our community quality of life. Consider this, when a lightning storm approaches, if you're outside, even though there's minimal risk, you run inside for protection. The chances of a lightning strike is about one in 1.2 million annually. Yet the risk of a catastrophic BES fire is far greater. Studies estimate a 2% chance of a major incident over a facility's lifetime. That is roughly one in 1,250 per year. Unlike a lightning strike, which affects one person, a BES fire like the one, the 2025 Moss landing, it would release toxic gases, force mass evacuations, and contaminations into our aquifer. This vital water source serves not only Halsted, but Wichita, Newton, Hutchinson, McPherson, and Heston. The lithium ion battery could leak and rele, um, release heavy metals, poisoning our drinking water and for the farmlands. Why would we take this risk if we're not willing to stand out in a lightning storm? Beyond safety, the noise pollution from BES cooling systems threatens our small-town charm. These systems, these systems produce a constant hum of 60 to 70 decibels minimum. But a facility the size that's been proposed could reach 75 to 90 decibels. To put this in perspective, 75 decibels is like a vacuum cleaning at close range. 80 decibels compared to a freight train 50 feet away or a loud blender. 85 decibels, loud heavy traffic or a power heavy traffic or a powered lawnmower. 90 is like a chainsaw. This intrusive noise could interrupt and disrupt our peaceful community day and night. Harvey County has already banned BES projects to protect, protect our water source. Why is Halsted willing to move forward without any safety measures? I ask the council to halt this project and please ban BES facilities within our city limits to safeguard our water, our health, and our way of life, and I thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members and community. My name's Mike Armendaras, and that's my wife Carolyn. We live at 315 West Street. And I'm here to address concerns about Concurrent Energy Storage Systems proposed, proposal for our city. I don't have much to add to what Carolyn said, so one thing I have come across is that the risk of cybersecurity risks. I found some information from ForeScout, which is a leading cybersecurity firm, found, and they recently found some critical vulnerabilities in SunGrove's equipment, which could affect their energy storage systems. A March 2025 study by ForeScout identified nearly 50 critical vulnerabilities in SunGrove's solar inverters, with some allowing remote code execution and grid disruptions. While focused on inverters, these issues raised concerns about similar risks in their energy storage electronics, like battery management systems. A cyber attack could destabilize our grid, our, or expose residents' data. I urge the council to require SunGrove to provide third-party cybersecurity audits and compliance with NIST guidelines for smart energy systems before deployment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, I'm Darrell Graves. A little bit about my background. I'm a professional firefighter, paramedic, with going on 25 years' experience. I've got two degrees, numerous certifications, and I've functioned at the operational level on numerous large incidents at local, state, and federal levels. When we look at larger fire departments across the U.S. and their responses to lithium battery fires, it's pretty significant. FDNY, for example, will give a full hazardous materials response to any fire, including lithium batteries regardless of size. So something as small as a hoverboard or a small scooter gets a full first alarm assignment plus a hazardous materials assignment. PPE manufacturers are currently doing tests due to uncertainties regarding whether turnout gear can be cleaned of the contaminants that they're going to encounter with lithium battery fires. And while many structural fires produce some of these same toxins, it's at significantly lower levels and for substantially shorter periods of time. We've been told to let this process work, and we've been trying to do that, but now it seems like that's been being expedited for some reason. Everybody here's done a lot of networking and research, including talking to victims of other BES incidents, scientists, doctors, electrical engineers, politicians, attorneys, and nearly all of them have said, "Don't allow this to go in near your home." This is vetted legitimate research that these people have looked up. It's been researched and approved by other scientists, other people that are professionals in their line of work, and they're not just opinionated articles. My wife and I, we moved our family here a few years ago because it's a beautiful, safe, quiet little town full of great people, and my opinion, based on my professional experiences and research, is that allowing this product, uh, this to proceed could potentially end in a major incident, if not catastrophe. And so for this reason, I very respectfully request that you not allow this project to move forward or be built.
Thank you, Darrell. Richard Edwards. Richard Edwards, you're next. Yeah.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinion, as I've done previously at this council and at the planning and zoning. I love Halsted and always have. A good part of my early years was spent here, and I've always been misty-eyed about Halsted, Kansas. And I got here, back here as soon as life would let me, and it wasn't soon enough. It's a pleasure being here. When this, this situation with, with the possibility of this installation going in here, when it first came up and I attended the first meeting here, I thought, "Well, that's that. They're not going to approve something that is so stupid." I'm sorry, but it is. It's stupid. It's dangerous. It's dangerous. What they're talking about putting in out here, you look at, obviously, the other situations where large accumulations of these lithium-ion batteries in any of their forms. Look, look at what has happened. When they go up, they go up explosively, not just a little bit. They go up explosively, and they contaminate everything around them. The probability of that happening is low, but we're the ones that take the risk of that. We are the ones. I don't know why on earth this small group of people would be the ones to make that decision for us, the homeowners. I do not, I do not understand what you get out of it. It's got to be something you really believe in these lithium-ion battery storage situations. You've really got to believe in that. There's got to be a reason you are so far into this with the, with the opposition that you have, and that's, that's what I do not understand. What are you doing? It's just, these things, these things, you, you look at the recycle plant, it, it's not that it's a storage, energy storage facility. The battery recycle plant in, in Missouri, when it went up, boy, did it ever go up, and luckily for them...
Richard, your, your time's about up, so could you get to your point?
Yeah, I know. I know. It, it didn't make any difference because you've already decided. You have already, or you wouldn't be risking your legacy as a city council. You would not be risking your legacy if you not had not already decided that. I'm just saying.
Thank you for coming in. Thanks for your opinion. Your time's up.
You really need to rethink this.
We have other people that want to speak, so thank you. Forgive me if I butcher this. I'm not even going to try to say the last name, but the first name is Adina? Okay.
And that's quite okay.
How do you pronounce your last name?
O'Rear.
Okay.
Just like it's spelled. I live, my, Adina O'Rear. I live out on 12th Street in the country. You think it may not affect me, but that aquifer, however you want to say it, I'm not a professional. That's my water. That's the water for many places. Well, you can hear Evergy talk about that carbonization, low carbonization. That's what they want. They want the aquifer because they're doing experiments on decarbonization, which will contaminate the water. If you look at Evergy's page, it's right there. Duke, do you know who Duke University is? It says that it will cause contaminants tenfold, some places even more. It's not just the BES. They want the aquifer, but that aquifer is the main water source for most places. Yes, Wichita has another source, Cheney. But you think this is going to be the last drought we have? Hutchinson has another well. But what about the rest of us? What are you going to do when the whole area, the whole half of Kansas, doesn't have water because you put a BES right on top of the aquifer? And they're doing experiments on decarbonization with our aquifer. Everybody's without water. What are you going to do? They're going to come right here to Halsted. They're going to want to know why, and they're going to sue, and I would probably be one of them if I have no water, because I have grandkids that go to school here. That's how I know her. But that's a risk of toxic. Could you picture it? Big old football game. All the people from different towns, and that BES goes off. What are you going to do in that split second to protect those people? Run around and hand out face masks? Face masks won't work. That's not going to protect them, and it will cause sicknesses. And some people like me that have problems, it could kill. But they're after the aquifer. They want that for storage of CO2. If you want to earn, if you want to make money, how much have you guys lost on that hospital? Sell it for a dollar.
We don't own the hospital, ma'am.
Huh?
We do not own the hospital.
I thought it went to the city.
And your time's up. Thank you for coming in tonight. Next up is Preston Orr. Preston Orr, there he is. I'd rather have you at the podium, so the mic's there, so you're part of the YouTube video.
Can I bring him? Can I just take him?
I understand that Harvey County did two-year research on this and turned it down, so I'd like to know how much research this committee has put into it, and I'd like to know what you know that Harvey County didn't know.
Thank you, Preston. Cole, still in? You, okay. You'll, you, you want me to call on you again then down the road? Okay. Uh, Julie, is it House or Haas? I'll get it right.
I live in North Newton, and I don't understand, other than greed, why this is going on. Can you, can you talk to me about that?
I'm not here to directly answer your questions tonight, allowing you to speak.
The other thing is, you being a fireman, have you looked into how these fires are put out?
Oh, yeah.
And then when, what about the, the ship out in the ocean that is still burning and has burning, been burning for a long time?
I understand.
So why is it still burning if you're going to be able to put a fire out if that blows up?
The easiest answer to that is I'm not going to.
Yeah. Yeah. So all I am saying is this is pure greed.
Susan Kribel.
Susan Kribel. I live on Ridge Drive. I have lived in Halsted for 52 years, minus college and some work out of state, but obviously I like it here. The recommendation of some who are in the know, firefighters, emergency personnel, is if such a facility goes in, don't live there. I really don't want to be run out of my sweet little town because of a battery storage facility. So there are too many unknowns to go forward now. Concurrent doesn't have a track record of success. You can't, they can't go back years and say, "Look what we've done." It's too new, and it's too unknown, and it's too dangerous.
Kyle Stoops. Roger Keating.
Roger Keating, 22nd Drive. I do have to give you guys credit. You have brought the town together like nobody's business. Jim's survey, it is amazing. I thought, boy, how, I, I hope we get 75%. You know, maybe we'll get 80. It was at 95%. I know some people commented to you quietly because they were afraid of coming out in favor of this, but I still think it's probably well over 90% that are against. I'm just very curious. Did you guys vet Concurrent at all?
No, we're not to that part of the process yet. There's no point in even trying to vet a developer until we have regulations in place to ensure a project could be permitted.
Because it's very clear, and, you know, I came up when I spoke a few meetings back and gave you a lot of red flags. We've seen even more red flags come up. The noise, I think people are paying attention. When you look at a lot of the Texas facilities, I think people were very eager to get these into Texas because of, they had that winter, the wind generators failed, and I thought they thought we were getting a bunch of battery backups, and then I think they've realized they aren't battery backups and that they're also extremely noisy. But with that, you start looking at these companies, and Concurrent not only doesn't have a successful track record, and I already brought up the fact that they, mother company was already gone bankrupt, but we've recently found out that they've got this lawsuit against them. And so it's like, how are they even supposed to pay for anything here when they can't pay for the one up in Wyoming that they're getting sued for? And I don't think they're alone. I, I really, like, the Evergy guys are here. I'd actually feel better if Evergy was more involved rather than these third parties, who knows where they're coming from, where the money's from, what their motivation is, all these middlemen getting their cut, just making our rates go up. It just, it adds to the danger and the confusion. There's so many levels of risk, so many levels of danger. The community is so against this, and I, I'm just shocked that it's still moving forward. Like so many here. I'm asking for you guys to put a motion forward to end this. I'm asking for you guys to put a motion forward to end this. At the very least, put a five-year pause. The, the technology, like, like the Evergy's guy said, it is going leaps and bounds. There's no point in us being the first. We don't, we're not racing anybody. We don't need it in the town.
Your time's about up, Roger. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you for letting me speak.
You bet. Brad? Dilts? Did I say that right?
Hi, my name is Brad Dilts. I'm an organic vegetable farmer near Sedgwick. There was an accident in California with a Bess facility recently in which a 25-mile radius, they had to seal up their homes due to environmental contamination in the air, turn off the HVAC systems, all that for days in order for that, to wait for that stuff to sift out. A 25-mile radius around Halsted is roughly 160,000 acres of farmland. All those contaminants in the air have to end up in the ground somewhere. And when you have forever chemicals, heavy metals, all that kind of toxic contamination that comes into there, that ruins that farm ground for potentially decades. Each acre of farm ground here, depending on the crop, generates between $1,000 and $65,000 a year in annual revenue. What would that do to the community when 160,000 acres of farmland is put out of commission? What is that kind of impact around here? You know, we have these East Coast companies that are harvesting federal grant dollars for greenwashing on these projects on battery facilities that, let's face it, batteries don't generate power. They don't produce power. All they do is concentrate and store power that's generated elsewhere so that you have a high energy density, which partly leads to explosive nature than when they do fail. And, you know, you got to ask yourself, why are these East Coast corporations targeting small communities that don't have a lot of cash on hand, don't have a lot of revenue of their own? And, you know, what do they do when they just get tired of the project or when the federal grant funds run out? Because these projects don't stand on their own without the grants. You know? They see these communities that they target, like Halsted, as throwaway communities. There's way too much risk here and no upside. You know, especially considering the area that surrounds it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Amber Gable? There she is.
Hi, I'm Amber Gable. I'm from Burton, just next door. And me and my fiance had a couple of questions for them, but they're not here. We were wanting to know if they could give us a 30,000-foot overview and name of the end user along with the benefits that they would be receiving from this project. Also, can they explain in detail how our communities and surrounding people will benefit from allowing you to move forward with this project? And what procedures would you have in place to mitigate any disaster or failure that might occur, given the fact that this is a prone flooding town and area? And when can you make the environmental impact studies of this project readily available to the community and the surrounding people involved? Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. I would like to mention that if, if we do get to that special use permit process, that's when these studies kick off. And the city, we, we would, would make those studies readily available to the public. Ethan and I have already discussed setting up a special website so those studies could be posted there. But we've got to get there first. We're, we're not even close. Amy Siple? Amy, there's Amy.
Amy Siple, I live at 125th and 151st Street. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to come and speak to you. Kansas is a net exporter of energy. We produce more than we actually use. Now, we were told when we adopted a lot of these green policy, the wind farms and the solar farms, that our prices would, energy prices would go down, but that has been the opposite. In fact, Kansas pays for the infrastructure to export our energy. These slick people come in, they look a lot and act a lot like politicians, and they've got silver tongues. But understand, you're not always going to hear the truth from them. And studies can be manipulated, and you need to be aware of that as well. My understanding is that Halsted would not receive backup power from this Bess storage plant. And actually, the push for more power is really generated by AI and the data centers. That's why we're seeing the big push for more power and the storage of it. As the Evergy man said, the batteries are evolving. Please wait. Why not wait three, five years? And let's see if something safer comes out. We have history regarding the lithium ion batteries. Look at the Moss Landing Fire, which was just earlier this year. There's lots of data that we can look at. History tends to repeat itself. I understand you're being enticed with money, and some of you have been enticed more than others. I'm going to ask you not to sell out our community, not to sell the souls of all the people sitting around here for $50,000 or $500,000. Actually, if we did the math and we got the money from the sales tax, I think it would have been like 1.23 million or something. So it's a, it's just not worth the risk. Please put a moratorium on this. Wait three to five years. Yes, it affects that, like, like Brad said, 26-mile radius of people who couldn't even use their HVAC system following the Moss Landing Fire. Think about all the communities. And I do say, if you do have a vote here in Halsted, how do Brad and I get to vote on that? But if a fire goes up and this lady from Burton, we are all going to be affected too. Yes, so, and the aquifer, there is a lot at stake here. Please reconsider this. It's not worth the greed. It's not worth the money. Don't sell ourselves.
Here's another name I'm probably going to butcher, Amy Duvey? Duveer?
Close, Duvey. Hi, I'm from Sedgwick too, and, and I know you said that you couldn't answer those questions tonight. But I, I would like to ask you, I go to the Harvey County Commission meetings. And did you consult with the planning and zoning about why they have banned that? Thank you for mentioning that. Why they have banned all these things in, in Harvey County?
If you'd like me to answer that question, I will, because technically, Bess is not banned in Harvey County. It is allowed under special use permit under their CREP or what they call their commercial renewable energy projects. Brad's the county attorney. Can you back me up on that, Brad?
I'm a councillor, not county attorney. Two different things. Yeah, that's correct.
So it's, it isn't banned. It is allowed by special use permit in Harvey County. Just nobody's looking at any projects in the county right now.
Well, I, I would hope that you would listen to the, the people here, because even though I'm in Sedgwick, we would still feel those, the results of this too. And having the Evergy people here too, I can tell you, we have Evergy as our, as our energy supplier. And as Amy Siple said, we've always heard about the wind farms and, and the solar, that that's going to decrease our bills, our bills, and they're talking about another increase here. And we're supposed to trust the process? When they've lied to us about our bills going down? And now we're supposed to trust the process of what they recommend? It's a hard swallow. And so please, as Amy said, don't sell us out. We're in the vicinity that will pay, that, I mean, we'll feel the ramifications as well. So please, take that into consideration.
Thank you, Amy. That completes the list of names I had. Is there anybody else here that wants to address the council? Come on up, and since I don't have your name on the list, you're going to have to tell us who, who you are.
I am Beth Danada. I don't live in town. I live outside of town. But I have read enough to know that this is not safe. And it doesn't matter whether I'm in town or not. If nothing else, put a vote through this town. Let them decide. It would be a lot better if the whole voting public in this city decided instead of, and I'm not saying, I don't know how you folks are going to decide. You may say, this isn't logical. There may be more logic in here than out here. Maybe you all will be logical enough to say, this is dangerous. 60, as I have read, of these battery facilities have burnt. That's a lot. Now, I don't know how many are out there, but one is all it takes here. I cannot imagine the Halsted Fire Department being able to do anything except do their best to help hold people back from it. I can, think you should consider at least letting Halsted vote on this. Well, if Halsted is the one that's getting it, they're the ones that are going to have to vote, I'm afraid. Wichita will be affected. Newton will be affected. All the surrounding towns will be affected if that thing goes up. And some people could move away, but most of you can't. I don't see me being able to move away. If that thing goes up, my property won't be worth anything. If that thing goes up, any one of you who own property, that property is going to be pretty worthless. No one is going to buy it. Doesn't matter if you decide to move away. The property stays here. Think seriously. Think seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, I'll allow a couple of you if you'd like to talk again.
I used to live in Melvern, Kansas before my daughter passed away. And they put in, near us, because we were on the edge, they put in a wind farm. And so we were included in the surveys. Yeah, they promised jobs. They promised how much energy it was going to save, you know, put out, and it was going to save us on our bills. We got, two weeks, people got to work clearing the rocks off the ground. That was all the work it brought. As far as saving us on our bills, our bills went up. They told us it was for maintenance. They had to maintain it. As far as, we had so many power surges that, did you know that a power sur, your power surges you put on your computers and all? They're only good one time. You have multiple power surges, you're going to lose appliances. And we had multiple power surges. There was no cost savings at all. Our bills went up. No jobs. No, they didn't blow up like this could. But it didn't save us anything. And they did go back to them and say, hey, you promised us this, you know, that our bills would be lower. You promised us better energy. And we were told that there's salesman, there's the builder, then there's a buyer. Well, the first ones promise you all this stuff. Well, that's not the buyer that promised you all that. And they said, sorry, I'm luck. We didn't promise you that. Just thought I'd tell you. But they're after the aquifer. That's why they're targeting towns that need money. It's because we have an aquifer.
Let me make it very clear, we don't need money right now. We're very fiscally sanctioned.
Apparently, you take that kind of a risk with people and water?
Was there a gentleman over here that was, I'll take him and then you, ma'am? Give us your name, please.
My name is Carl Jones. At one point in time, I was certified organic farmer. I want to say one thing that maybe a lot of people haven't taken into consideration. Halsted is in the floodplain of the Little Arkansas River. This is land of fire, tornado, 100 mile an hour winds, and a lot of lightning strikes. Anything can happen at any time. And I don't care what kind of contingency plan you've got going on. And if something as big as this thing goes, I don't think the local fire department's going to be able to handle it. But what I want to bring about is if there is some kind of catastrophic event happens to this plant and it gets contamination in the air in a 26-mile radius, water carries contaminants. It will contaminate everything in the Little Arkansas and the Big Arkansas floodplain all the way down into Oklahoma to the reservoir and will contaminate the reservoir down there and will continue all the way to the ocean. This does not just affect this local community. This is something that the EPA studies need to be done on. It takes, in remediation, to remove contaminated soil is down six inches is the recommended remediation. You're talking 2 million pounds of soil that has to be removed to a hazardous waste site. And as far as I know, the only one that handles lithium hazardous waste is in New Mexico. You're talking 128 billion pounds of soil per square mile. Can you imagine how many miles the watershed of the Little Arkansas takes up? You're talking about removing six inches of soil from hundreds, thousands of square miles. It will turn everything in the floodplain into a hazardous waste dump. Please consider the technology and the risks that are involved. Put a moratorium to study until you get the EPA findings and recommendations about this. This technology is too new, too dangerous, and they are not going to be the ones that pick up the bill. You are. And they will sue, like the lady before me said. When this starts happening and the insurance companies say, uh-uh, we're not covering this, you're lost. You've lost everything, your home, your property. You can't remove any of the goods that are in your home. You're wiped out. And who do you think they're going to come after? The approving authority, which in this case begins with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stacy Rogers. I'm from Wichita. And what I wanted to share, I used to be a city council member for Mount Hope a number of years ago. And this amount of public disapproval of a project would have never continued. We would have immediately stopped it, number one, because community is, is important. Second, the last gentleman also made a very good point, which is what I'm going to go into, is if this council approves it after all of this, of all of this disapproval, and we have some sort of battery plant meltdown, whatever catastrophe happens, yes, this town will no longer exist, not only because of the environmental issues, but because you will be sued into oblivion and there will be nothing left, nothing. Because you guys were the ones that approved it after everybody said no. And so you need to really, really consider that, that aspect of it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. You'd like to speak, Betty? Come on up. Give everybody your name. Not everybody may know, know you like I do.
I'm Betty Smith, and I live on West Street, 824 West Third. My question is, is there any way to stop this now instead of going on and going through everything when there's so much disapproval? Is there any way to put a stop to it right now?
I have a statement I'm prepared to give later this evening that will address that. Anybody else? Cole?
Hi, I'm Cole Silhan. I'm a former resident-
I'm a former resident. I wasn't gonna speak, 'cause I didn't wanna take away from everybody. Everybody should be so proud of your community. This is awesome. We actually bought a place before all this kicked off. So I didn't move because of BESS. We had already planned on it. But I love this community. It's fantastic. What I wanna bring up right now is, um, we're in a state of war right now. And cybersecurity, the risks of a BESS being hacked is huge. Right now, we're fighting Iran. We have threats from China, Russia, India. Like, the list goes on, on how many people we could potentially go into war with. Who's to say somebody can't hack this BESS system? And not just one battery explodes, the entire thing explodes. I'm trying to hold back my language, sorry. But the whole thing explodes. It wipes out this community. What is the easiest way in war to wipe out a mass group of people? It's gas. And how are we gonna protect ourselves from gas? We don't have gas masks in our house. We don't have thirty seconds to hurry up and get our kids and get our animals and get our things and get the heck out of town. We don't have that capability. So now we're sitting here in war, suffering. How many people in here want to ban this right now? Raise your hand. I ask tonight a motion for a ban. Thank you.
When I checked in tonight, I said I might wanna talk. What Evergy said...
My name's Daniel King, and I live at nine-one-nine West Second Street. And we've only been here since October. But I lived in Florida for eighteen years. And one of the things, when I came to the first meeting, when I heard that it was gonna be an unmanned station, that scared me. And that's the first time I stood up. Because if there's nobody there to oversee it, how do you stop it in time? I've done, I'm a retired electrical contractor. I've worked on a lot of industrial situations. I had my own business for twenty years. But I've been working on doing electrical work since nineteen seventy-nine. And the other thing about that is that the, uh, when I was in Florida, after, right after I left Florida, there was a hurricane that came through, hit Naples, Florida. They could not put the cars out. All the electric cars sat underwater, burning for weeks. And those were just four hundred and eighty volt DC battery packs that were in the cars, Teslas, whatever, I don't know, all of them. They just sat there and they were burning underwater, and they couldn't put them out, 'cause it's a chemical reaction. So I don't know how you're gonna do it when you're dealing with thousands of volts. Coming into, coming into that, like, that substation probably has over ten thousand volts. I don't know, 'cause I don't know what the, what the megawatts and, you know, what they've got that rated at. But the thing is, um, the battery, just small battery packs are dangerous. A friend of mine in Florida, who's a, he's a fireman, he's a lieutenant now in the Sarasota County Fire Department. He said they had to take special training. When the Priuses and all those electric cars came out, they cannot cut the car, like, if somebody's in an accident, they cannot use the jaws of life. Only, they can only use it on certain places in the car. If they cut the wrong place, they'll electrocute the people inside the car. Okay? That's, that's four hundred and eighty volts. I bought a Prius, I didn't buy it. I brought it home for the night, and I started reading about all the DC voltage problems. Does anybody here own an electric, electric car? Okay, you do not wanna work on it by yourself. Because the four hundred and eighty volts will kill you. It's four hundred and eighty volts DC. It will not shut off. Right, he's shaking his, you're nodding your head, right? Okay, soon as you short that out, you're, you're done. I mean, it'll, it'll burn, and you won't be able to put it out. And then I hear about this, after we had bought our house, then I heard about this that's going in here, and it freaked me out. And then I came to that first meeting, and I, I'm just like, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what to tell you to tell you how dangerous this is. This is gonna be, the second thing, that when, when the guy from Evergy was talking about how they're involved, that's the big difference between them and what you guys are looking at. Because there's nobody here to oversee it. Then the third thing that, that bothered me about that meeting was that you were talking about giving them a thirty day to bring, to rectify any deficiencies. If you give them a thirty days, the place will be, it'll be burned down, and everything like they were talking about will be done. I think they need thirty minutes at the most.
Was that at a P&amp;Z meeting? Because we've never seen anything like that.
Okay, that was, yeah, that was the, that was the zoning meeting. That was the first one I came to. And I, I stood up like four times, 'cause I kept hearing this stuff. And I'm like, this, this can't go through. So, anyhow, thanks.
Thank you, Daniel. Sir, come on up to the podium.
My name is Bill Sombleson. Travis, I gotta congratulate you. I have sat in your position when I lived in Wisconsin. You're doing well. Anyway, I'm not gonna reiterate. I stand with what these people have been saying. It surprises me, because as I drive around Halsted, I see a number of signs saying, "Power up Halsted." What strikes me is, there's no one here presenting that position. And I think that lack gives you a strong message.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Your name, please, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Kay South. Let's say I just fell off a turnip truck, and I'm here. I just am observing. I don't live here. I live in Newton. But all of these citizens from this city are stating what they hope will happen. And I keep hearing you say, well, we're not there yet. You know, you have some steps you're gonna do before you decide on what you're gonna decide. So I'm wondering, can't you be there tonight? Don't, don't use your energy with, oh, here's my question. What's the population of Halsted?
Uh, roughly twenty-three hundred and some, is that right? Twenty-two hundred and some?
This is a pretty heavy representation, I would say.
We're very passionate here in town.
Amen. That's good, because I love little communities. I love the spirit of this community. I like who you have joining you here. I think you people are alert. You wanna serve your population. You were elected to do this. So I just think, well, you've heard what I have to say. But I really enjoyed hearing the citizens of your city speak. You've got some good people here.
Yeah. Is there anybody else that'd like to address the council? Go ahead, sir.
Well, I'm Dale Snyder. I live in Cottonwood Acres there. And it just occurred to me, what about the traffic situation, the congested trucks coming in and out of the batteries and so forth? Near Halsted and Sixth Street, for example, and especially during the harvest season, hear a lot of, of downshifting and so forth. It's a loud noise. And so there'd be a lot of truck, truckies, trucks coming in and out from that battery place.
Sure, I mean...
You know, there's gonna be more traffic, more congestion in the town. So just maybe, I thought that might deserve some consideration.
Well, I mean, if the project were to ever be approved, the truck traffic would certainly be there during construction. But then after that, it would be gone.
It would be gone?
Yeah.
Right.
Anybody else?
I'm wondering, um, well, I had it in my brain until I got up here. You know, you guys have to understand how detrimental this is. And they just wanna come to small communities and think that we don't know a darn thing. We're smarter than they give us credit for. And we're smarter than maybe you guys give us credit for.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Going ones? Yeah, councilman, or councilperson Shawna would like to address the crowd.
Okay, so I'm Shawna Will. Some of you have messaged me, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate all of you showing up in force. You're right, we do have a small, a really, really great community and a special place. And I know that, 'cause I grew up here. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-two when my family moved here. And I have my family here. And I teach here. And, um, so when I say that I hear you, I hear you. Every kid that comes from my classroom becomes my kid, you know? Some of you may have kids that have had me as a teacher, or you're gonna have kids that have me as a teacher. And I promise you when I say that, that I love Big and I love this community probably as much as more, as many of you. And so I hear you. And, um, and I resonate with you. And all of these things are in my core. And all of these things are on my heart. And so the only thing I can say right now is that, I know that you can't trust everybody, but, um, trust that I have your absolute hundred percent best interest in mind in, in the things that come. I know all of you wanna vote, and I wish that I had power to, to do that. But, um, I, um, I, I just want you to know that I hear what you're saying, and it's not going on deaf ears. And, um, I just want you to know that, I guess.
And I'd like to say something. Uh, when I come in, when I sent out my survey, I guess it would be, that's kind of an unofficial survey. Trust me when I say I had had a lot of input before that. There's no doubt about that. And, uh, and the reason I sent it out is I wanted to get a feel, a real feel, you know? 'Cause I know that people that come in here, I know that Richard brought up the case that, uh, when he talked up, up here, and I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate your passion, for sure. And, and everybody's passion. When I sent out that survey, I wanted to know. You know, that's kinda unofficial. But in today's world, you do it over social media, 'cause that's the most impact you're gonna have. You know, a lot of speeches mean a lot, and I understand the passion and all that stuff. And, uh, and I'm just gonna be real honest with you. I'm not here for me. I'm here for the citizens of the town. And I told, I told my wife when I, when I sent that survey out, I said, boy, I can't wait for this. You know? 'Cause I, I had a feeling what I'd get, a little bit of everything. And, you know, some of our, some of us have talked back and forth, and I got to know some of you. And I understand Shawna's passion on it, um, and all that stuff. And, and I've asked the same question. I've said, is it worth it? And, and my answer is, to myself, no. And then, and then when I gave out my unofficial survey, you know, I kinda got the answer. I have people that messaged me both ways and sent me emails that either supported it or didn't support it. And I don't, don't say that I didn't get people that supported it, because that's not true. I did. But I will say that overwhelmingly, in three hundred and some odd different conversations, that's a lot for two days. So, that's my input on it. If I said I would make a motion to ban it, I would mean it right at this moment. So I'm gonna make that motion. I know it won't go anywhere, but I'll make it.
So is that an official motion you're making?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I will second that.
A motion and a second on the floor to ban BESS for the city of Halsted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Would you like to do a roll call vote on that? Ethan?
Can I say why?
Go ahead, Denise.
The reason why is that we need to have proper regulations in place. I, no, 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 no. We, we have not, we have not seen what the, we, we have seen what the P&amp;Z have said. We want, I want the time to look through that and then come up with an informed motion. Because there, then, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
We were at the last meeting. They said, they said that they were gonna throw out all the recommendations.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did.
No, they, they, they didn't.
Let her speak. We've listened to everybody else.
That's fine.
Let's, let's not heckle her unless let her, let's, you are too. You are. I'm telling you, you are. I'm on your side, but you're heckling her. Yeah, we're all family.
We're all family. I want to make sure that when we do this, we do it right, all right? And so, no, no, huh?
You had a vote.
We, but when...
It was seconded.
And, no, okay. No, I wanna make sure that we, if, if we do this ban, we do it correctly. Because if you don't do it, if you don't do it right, then there are some things, how many? Do any of you, do any of you have a, or have looked into getting a home BESS energy system? There are people in town that have one. No, we don't. We don't. And, and, and we've heard tonight that you think that, that we're getting money. There's no money under the table for this. There is none whatsoever, none. That's, none of this has been promised. What we, what I would like to see is have a, have the regulations put into place. We can put our moratoriums on it. We can put our ban and those kinds of things in it. And that's what, and that's why I voted no for this ban right now.
Actually, ma'am, Denise, let, let's get back to business here, Denise. Actually, the motion was made, it was seconded, a vote was called for, and the council had passed a ban on BESS. I'm going to veto that. So if the council chooses, you can overturn my veto with a unanimous vote. Would we have a unanimous vote to overturn my veto?
I'm gonna give another try. Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to ban the BESS system in Halsted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to ban BESS in Halsted.
Mr. Mayor, just before you vote this time, in terms of the legal ramifications, total ban, any kind, anywhere of any type? 'Cause that's how it's worded so far. I just want you to know that. That's fine, just so you're aware. Okay, before this vote's taken, there are some homes that will want to put solar ba, solar panels on their houses and then take off of that and store it into their own private BESS, it's a little unit. This would also... Stop. This would also ban that. So if somebody in town wanted to put solar panels on their roof...
Or has it.
Wanted to put solar panels on the roof and then have their own little battery storage system, this would not allow that. A total ban would not allow a private citizen from having solar panels on their roof and then storing their own electricity. A total ban would also ban... would also ban that.
So, we have the motion and the second on the floor to ban BESS. I'm gonna do a roll call vote and I'll start with you Jim.
Yes, ban.
No.
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Denise?
No, not in its current, not in the motion that's been-
It's not unanimous, so my veto is not overturned. So, I'm gonna deliver that statement that I had prepared earlier. Any motion you want.
Okay. I feel like I'm gonna puke. Um, okay. So, it's my understanding that commercial would be considered like a tier one-
No, that's tier three.
No, that's tier three? Alright. With the exception of your, your home commercial individualized storage system, all other BESS systems would be banned. You would, yeah.
Commercial and grid scale.
Commercial and grid scale would be banned, residential, small scale, and would be allowed.
Let's finish this motion up first Kevin. The, the way I understand Shawna wants to ban what would be tier three BESS and allow tier one, tier two is a medium sized, do you want to include that in with your ban?
Are those allowed in residential homes?
No, that would be hospitals and schools and facilities like that.
Residential. Only residential would be allowed.
Let's give it another shot. I will second that.
So we have a motion and a second to ban tier three BESS and tier two BESS and allow tier one. All in favor of that motion?
Yes, aye.
Charlie.
Nate.
Aye.
Shawna?
Yes.
Denise?
Yay. Yay, yes.
Okay. So, that would pass and again, I'll veto that. Because it's my right to do that. And, and I'm, I got a statement later to deliver. Council, if you'd like a motion to try to overturn my veto, I would entertain that now.
What would the process, how would I make that motion to overturn his veto? Just a-
Just like that.
A simple, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to overturn your veto.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to overturn my veto. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, aye. So, my veto is not overturned. So, we've closed out public comment. I do have a statement I want to deliver tonight and I'm gonna do that now. As mayor of Halsted, I have a responsibility to lead with facts, transparency and a commitment to the long-term well-being of our community. Tonight, I want to directly address the ongoing concerns and actions by a group opposing the proposed battery energy storage system project in our industrial park. Let me be clear, no final decision has been made to approve or reject any BESS project. If and when the city would choose to adopt regulations, it does not mean that a project is also given a green light to proceed. That is exactly why we have things in place like planning and zoning processes and development processes and if a project gets that far along, eventual permitting processes to ensure that any development, including this one, is thoroughly vetted, regulated and evaluated in regards to the public interest, benefit, health, safety and welfare. What concerns me and should concern every resident of Halsted is that this opposition group is actively working to block this process from ever happening. That's not public input, that's obstruction. You can't call for transparency and public safety, then refuse to let the process designed to ensure those things are observed move forward. The special use process, as has been recommended by the Planning Commission, is the mechanism through which we can ensure appropriate safety measures, environmental reviews, land use compatibility and additional public input regarding any BESS project. It is a process that would begin to provide the actual answers regarding this project that so many in our community and the governing body also have. If we don't allow this process to proceed, we forfeit our ability as a community to vet and shape the project in a way that serves Halsted, not outside interests. We will be making decisions not based on facts or actual data specific to Halsted or a project, but instead from a position of fear and uncertainty. We owe it to everyone to explore any potential economic opportunities for this city while also making sure that we are protecting our people, our land and our water. Shutting down the process before it even starts does a disservice and is not good governance. I encourage every resident, whether you support or oppose the potential BESS project, to let the process happen. To attend meetings, ask questions and engage, but let's do it the right way. Let's be informed, respectful, engaged, not divisive, dismissive or disruptive. Let's be opening, open to listening to things that might even contradict our preconceived notions, whatever that might be. Those seeking to invest in our community deserve a fair and open process. Current businesses and industries deserve a fair and open process. Residents deserve a fair and open process. Halsted deserves a fair and open process. I remain committed to working with the governing body to ensure that there is one. Thank you. No comment ma'am and we're gonna move on with our agenda this evening. So the next thing on our agenda council is we need to set a council, a special meeting work session date. And what are you looking at there Ethan?
Well, we need a budget work session and we would suggest sometime the week of June 30th or July 7th for that. And then obviously, if you all want any work sessions related to battery energy storage, those should also be set.
Yeah.
After that, it is based on your prerogatives.
Did you just say dates?
Uh, just weeks.
Can I say that again please, sorry?
Uh, the week of June 30th or the week of July 7th.
I'm good for Monday, the 30th, first or the second, or I'm good for the-
Are we looking at Mondays? Just Mondays for these?
No.
He just said the 8th was out for him.
8th is out for you.
Wednesdays are out for me.
Yeah, I try not, I would try not to do these on Wednesday.
Could we, what does Monday the 30th look like for people? Or Monday the 7th? I guess that's after the holidays, so does that matter to people?
I can do the 7th.
Yeah, I can do the 7th or the 30th either one.
Charlie?
7th is fine.
What time?
6?
No.
What's good for you?
Well, wait a minute. July, that's the first day of school, so we're getting out, can we go 6:30? That'll be easier.
You wanna just do 7? Does that work better? Oh, sorry, the 30th. At 6:30.
June 30th?
7th at 6:30 or June 30?
June 30th.
June 30.
We all good at June 30?
And this is for the-
June 30.
This is for the work session.
This is for the-
Budget work session.
Okay.
That's gonna take the whole time.
30. I say, I've heard both dates thrown out, so.
That's why I was clarifying too.
Exactly, because I got the 7th.
June 30th, 6:30, budget work session.
Yes, we absolutely need a budget.
That needs to happen first.
We just, we need a budget work session no matter what, whether you guys have additional study sessions related to battery energy storage is up to the group.
Okay, so June 30th, 6:30, budget works, budget work session.
That one I can do at 6. The 30th I can do at 6.
Can you do 6 Jim? Does that screw up your calendar that you just wrote down?
I haven't put it in there yet.
Oh my God. Okay, so that's been updated to 6 o'clock, June 30th, budget work session. I do think there needs to be conversation or-
Do you want to do that work session for that on the 7th then?
The BESS on the 7th?
Or do you guys want to get together before that? But I think we're gonna be waiting on some material, aren't we?
Or, it's a hard question to answer, I mean.
Yeah, it depends on which set of regulations we want to look at.
Not, I mean, I, I guess staff needs, like, this is one of those interesting situations where you clearly have a majority that has moved towards banning, so I don't know, does the majority not want to even see regulations?
Well, do we have to now see them because-
Don't have to, no.
Well, we do if we're, that's the option that we've been given.
No, yeah, I mean, you, you guys don't have to take any action regarding BESS going, I mean, you don't have to take anything. I would advise if, if the majority wants to ban, then we need to look at setting that up, I guess responsibly or bringing you guys language that then would be referred back to Planning Commission to institute whatever level of ban you want. The discussion here tonight, for instance, while it's great you guys are referencing tier one, tier two, tier three, those don't exist because nothing's been adopted.
That's what she was referring to, at least having those regs. And so-
And so we can sit there and, and bring both, I guess, regulations if there's still interest in seeing regulations, but we can also bring language that incorporates banning of, you know, putting that threshold because you're gonna want to hold that threshold. You can't merely state residential versus commercial versus utility scale because anyone can make an argument that any size of a capacity, they could tell you, "I have a 400 megawatt system that I say is a residential only."
Yeah.
I mean, obviously it, it probably wouldn't hold up, but at the same time, you know, are you talking two kilowatt hours? Evergy's, you know, doing a pilot program in homes that is up to 18 kilowatt hours. So, you have to.
Okay, so then the 7th, we can meet about just all of those things? I mean-
They're 6:30, yeah.
6:30 on the 7th for BESS.
So beyond, so staff has direction. Beyond the Planning Commission record which you all received, that's been generated, what do you want from staff for that meeting?
Well, I'm not gonna change my position. I don't think Mr. Van Scoye will change his. I don't expect that you would. So I would imagine that we would need language that would allow us to approve tier one.
Or establish the tiers.
I'm sorry, establish the, yes, we need to establish those regulations.
Or say home BESS is allowed, but commercial and-
We gotta have something.
Right.
We gotta, we gotta start with the regulations, so let's take what we've gotten, let's look at those.
I think without regulations, you, you go for the total ban, if that's what you want to do.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that, I, no. But I, I'm saying we need, we need to take a deep dive into those regulations.
I, I think there's too much to talk about to try to do it right now, so I think we need-
Exactly.
Well, let's do this. Let's make a motion and give me a second and let's vote to make that budget work session for June 30th and then we'll come back to this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to have our budget work session at, on June 30th at 6 o'clock in the evening.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to establish a work session for the budget on June 30th at 6:00 PM. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. So that work session is set. Now, we can set this session for BESS and then tell Ethan what he needs to bring.
Yes, please.
Well, again, I, I believe, we need to, at our work session, we need to be able to review these regulations and at least determine, this is my opinion, determine that we're going to possibly-
George, let's, let's go ahead and make the motion to set that work session.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to set the BESS work session for July 7th at 6:30 in the evening.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set another work session for July 7th at 6:30 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and that's set. Now, feel free to tell Ethan what you would like to have for material at that meeting.
Well, how hard is it to just have the avail, the materials that have been presented to us available? I mean-
Well, we've got that now on our thumb drives and, you know.
Well, that and the, from any, what is it, third-party lawyer or?
That's really-
Yeah, I mean, we can-
I mean, I don't know, because then we don't know what we don't know. I mean, if it's all available, then we can, at that time, use that time to, oh, we'll have, I don't know. Do we not need that now? Is that what we're saying?
Well, there's just a lot, like, in the regulation. I mean, the majority of the regulations, as you guys have, and the majority of those pages are going to be things that are specific to higher tier, higher threshold, battery energy storage systems. Again, if the, if the majority is wanting a ban, I mean, I think it's gonna be a much simpler language-
Okay.
To present to you all that essentially, you don't need to contemplate groundwater studies or some of the things that are currently in regulations because unless you're planning to require those for residential systems.
Okay.
No, I don't believe, believe we'd have to for a residential system now.
So it would just, yeah, be getting with and saying, you know, this is where-
I think it'd be, there needs to be a cap on residential systems in terms of size.
Yes.
But as it is now, there's nothing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I say we need to make the regulations first and then move from there if that's what we want to do.
They notify the city if they have those types of residential systems, is that?
Yeah.
I don't think that we've had one permit for those systems and I have heard by word of mouth that they are here.
So you need a, you need a permit to put-
Technically should have a permit for them because that should be signing off on-
I haven't, I haven't inspected any.
I, yeah, I-
They're electrically interconnected enough, they should require inspection.
We require inspection on solar panels, which we do have several permits that have been approved and final for solar.
Very good.
But not for battery.
Let's see, there we go, there, okay. Kinda have your answer?
Yeah, I think so.
No, I, I feel we need regulations no matter what.
Right.
That's right.
Or we're naked.
Okay, we got those work session dates set, so let's move on to the report section of the agenda. And we've all spoke a lot tonight, but Jim, if you'd like to say anything else?
I don't think I need to.
Charlie?
I, I think the plants downtown look great. I saw some big people watering today.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, a lot of water. And I, well, we had a lot here lately. They didn't, they didn't put muddy water in them, so, and I see the street ceiling is coming along nicely. In my neck of the woods, I think they're almost finished. It's a good deal.
All right, George?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Shawna?
Um, I just want to, I guess, take just a short bit of time to, um, you know, I appreciate people sharing things and I think that's, you know, part of healthy government and things like that, but also, I mean, I live in this community too and, you know, just remember that, you know, like, I'm a human being and, and I live here and I have the, you know, I think all of us in our own ways have our, the best interests- the best interests, you know, of our community in our hearts, and so just keep that in mind in your comments and your different things like that, I guess, so, that's it.
Denise?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, we will move on to Ethan for a city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, city of Halsted will be submitting its ride-away certification for the Safe Routes to School improvements this week, uh, which should help get that project on to its next step, uh, which would be bidding with KDOT. KDOT has also announced the Innovative Technology Grant Awards for the fall 2024 cycle, and Halsted's application was approved. Our application was in partnership with the city of Sedgwick, and both communities will be partnering with PEC on an AI street inventory and assessment. Uh, staff are currently working with PEC and the city of Sedgwick for next steps on that project. Final closing on the industrial park property being sold to Edge Investments, and then the four lots on the south side of the Powers addition land should be completed this week. I want to thank Halsted Fire EMS, Halsted PD, and Public Works for their recent efforts in monitoring water levels. City has a tried and true system in place, and the constant communication and shared information allows to make quick decisions and mobilize city resources as needed in response to high water. Harvey County EDC is currently engaged in a competitive reality study to look at current and future economic development opportunities. Please be on the lookout for an electronic survey from me, uh, that I'm forwarding from them to you all in the coming days, and they would appreciate it if you would all please take the time to fill it out as elected officials. Uh, the responses are anonymous. The city in no way receives that data until the EDC would get the final, uh, report. Speaking of EDC, the marketing video for the industrial park speculative building is now complete. We will work on getting the city's YouTube channel, uh, getting that video on the city's YouTube channel and website as soon as possible, and hopefully show it to you all at the next regular meeting. City was also informed that we again received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for our 2025 budget. This award recognizes the city's efforts to make a budget document that is accessible and informative as a policy document for our constituents. City joins around 20 cities and counties in Kansas this year who have been announced, um, to receive that award, and it's our seventh straight year for the city of Halsted to have our budget document recognized. And I had the opportunity to attend the one-day KACM summit held by Wichita State. Day included great speakers on current trends and best practices in public sector human resources, an in-depth look at the state's appraisal process relating to property taxes. Um, as you all might remember, that's a county function, so, um, it's just very educational to hear a county appraiser kind of come in and walk through that process. Uh, management and emerging trends in construction projects and the benefit of public art and creative spaces. As always, I just want to thank the governing body for their continued support of training opportunities for myself and for staff, and their commitment to budgeting for those opportunities for us in the year. And that, uh, other than that, work continues on the 2026 budget and various projects across the city, as Charlie noted, like with, uh, the ceiling project, uh, including, uh, now beginning conversations and preparation related to old settlers. Uh, the billboards are now up, and it's hard to believe it's only about a month away. Wow, wow.
Alright, council, anybody have any questions for Ethan? Excuse me?
Are you guys skipping the public forum section? That's what everybody was doing all night here.
Well-
Yeah.
That was the public forum. Do you have something you'd like to say that's not related to the best?
Well, yes or no?
I, I'll give you a few minutes. Come on, come on up to the mic.
I kind of wish there, that, you know, the people that walked out would stuck around through the rest of the meeting, because I think it would have been educational for them to hear the rest of your discussion. I, I haven't been to most of the meetings, I don't know what the history has been as far as the interactions. But, I feel like you guys gave everybody a chance to talk, and for, for the walkout, I don't think that was respectful. I know you mentioned about fear, you know, and, and I understand there's an urge there to say, you know, people are just fear mongering, you know, because what might happen, might won't necessarily happen. Honestly, the best explanation of fear I've ever seen came from a movie, uh, called After Earth, it was Will Smith movies. Uh, I'd encourage you to look it up on YouTube, because I want to justice. But the gist of it was that, you know, fear is imaginary. It's based on what your mind can believe, what the possibilities that exist. But danger is absolutely real. And so, you have to be able to evaluate the danger and react appropriately to danger without getting into fear of it, because fear will oblige you. So, you know, I, I think it's premature for you to dismiss what people are saying is fearful, because there is a real and present danger with the systems, and it has been demonstrated with the failures that have occurred. Other than that, I guess, uh, I, I think Denise was right about delaying, or about, about not just doing the outright ban, you know, because to me, that's just a reaction to the crowd. I think what you're going about with, uh, with actually defining the tiers and defining the categories of what, you know, what the limits are for what's allowed and what's not, I think that's the way to go, because otherwise, you could be exposed to ambiguous. So, anyway, um, I worked with Brad before, a long time ago, so caused a lot of trouble mentally, but, uh, anyway, um, that's really what I had to, I guess.
Alright, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, council, that does conclude our agenda this evening, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Still move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.